I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this little liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please.
Burgess here.
Nelson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Smith. Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Here.
Hey Candy? Show your TV off. All right, okay, now we need a motion to allow Candy to participate via remote because she is out sick. You have a motion please, I'll make the motion.
Sorry.
Uh, roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
All right Candy, you're in.
The TV really needs to go.
Thank you.
Yeah. What'd you say, the TV?
The TV needs to go.
Yeah, we get a lot of background noise from ya.
It's not, it's not on.
Okay, well, okay. It's better now, okay, now we need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 2nd, 2022 council meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Okay. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
All right, need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 17th, 2022 special meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Is this the paper that's in our packet, it says Monday, July 18th, 2022?
It's a special.
It's a special meeting that we did with the housing presentation.
It was Mon- Monday, July 18th?
No, it was November 17th, 2022.
Oh, I think it says, does this look in our packet right here?
It was in our packet, it does say.
Special meeting?
All right, we're gonna.
Okay, well, we'll get it amended.
Okay.
Oh, I see it, yeah. Roll call please, was it the amended date of November 17th, 2022?
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
All right, up next, a motion to approve the payment of bills as they appear on the warrant sheets, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion? Sina, roll call please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Present.
Walden.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
All right, public comments on agenda items. Anybody have anything right now? All right, we'll go to communications from the mayor. First off, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. We have kind of a light agenda in the light month, we'll have finance on the 27th. Couple things I do want to say, as I did hear from the state police, we're gonna try to have a meeting to go over what they have done out off of 51. They also did write some tickets here in town as well, just kind of go over what their long-term plan are, so. Do that, then also, I did get an email, at some point in 2023, WCIA is going to do a our-town assumption. So they're going to promote assumption, they'll come in for a week, they'll do a segment, like one might be on the businesses in town, one might be on the history of assumption, and then they'll end up doing a newscast in the weather here. I did reach out to Abby with ACPA to kind of work on something, because they, uh, Channel 3 wants to do it when there is something going on in assumption, so it might even be Assumption Fest, but they want to do it at some point in 2023, so we're gonna work on that. That's essentially been, uh, been it, so. Uh, we have another, a different attorney, uh, let's see what this helps, we have another one, Lisa here from, uh, Sorley and Northrop, and, uh, she's, uh, got quite a few municipalities under her belt, so she'll talk a little bit under the city attorney's report. And just go from there, so that's it, so, treasure. Uh, that's city attorney now, I guess, I'm sorry. I started my perennial.
That's okay, as, as you said, my name's Lisa Petrilli and I'm from, uh, Sorley, Northrop, and I just had a couple things on the attorney's report, been an update on the quitclaim deeds pertaining to the, uh, properties at 712 East Illinois and 315 North St. Johns. All the documents have been completed on our end. We completed the portion of the P-Tax documents and sent those off to the Christian County Reporter's Office who forward them then to the state, and once they're approved by the state, the state will communicate with us and we'll be able to set the closings on those. And then there's an update on, uh, Mr. Jamal. There was a hearing this past week, there are a couple motions pending. Everything has been combined into one hearing that will take place on, uh, January 3rd at 1:30, that will be on, uh, the plaintiff's motion, his motion for summary judgment, and the city's motion to dismiss. So those are the only things that are left pending, and those will both be taken up by the court on January 3rd, so we'll get an update following that.
Do you know how long those, um, things will take on those houses, on those properties?
I don't know, um, I'm trying to see here when. Everything's been taking a little bit longer, but, um.
The one on St. John we did last month, so November. Then the other one on Illinois was, might have been back in July.
Yeah, I think you're probably, it may take the state three months to get that.
I wondered if it would be a while.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, treasure, I think. All the persons.
I've had a couple people ask me if we could please get some police patrol on Illinois Street.
Yeah. Just more patrol, more sightings of them.
Uh, yeah, that, anything would be good, there's a lot of speeding going on on that street at night.
It's all on that street.
I know.
Yeah, no, it's, it's everywhere, and we'll have Jackson, uh, I know in a couple of months, you'll be able to do it, but yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Brian on that quarter.
Um, also, and I think that they've got one of the whole spicks, the north end of Sarah Street, right there where it meets Samuel? There was two huge holes right there where they meet, where the two streets meet. I know that they've got one of them built in, one of them toward the side where everybody turns.
Yeah.
It's still kind of got a dip in there, so I had a couple people ask me about that, so.
Samuel, Illinois?
Uh, Samuel and Sarah Street.
Sarah Street, alright.
So school, or the one that leads to the school.
Alright, we'll talk to Darren. All right, anything else? Moving on, we'll, uh, go under new business, uh, we have a motion to approve the tax levy ordinance for, uh, the 2023. Is there anything you would, would you like to discuss a little bit on that, I know you and I had talked about, talked about it in finance, upsetting it at, uh, 3.5? Just to kind of, you know, because I kind of went through it, you know, kind of needed a little bit of explanation, if you want to kind of say some things.
Sure, so.
For the record.
The way that this is, is it's your, it has your budget and appropriation amount, um, and you'll notice that, um, the way that it's set up is that there's an appropriation amount, and then there is the amount to be raised by the levy, so the levy amount, um, is actually only, I think the total's around 166,000.
66,000, yes.
So I, that can be a little bit confusing to people when they look at it to think that the levy's gonna be, you know, the full amount of the budget for this amount, it's the 166,000, so, um, this is broken up into, um, your, uh, line items based on your departments and your department funds. And the increase will not exceed 4.9%, so it'll keep you guys within the limits for truth in taxation, so.
Can I come in on that?
Sure Bob, I'll let ya, but, okay, go ahead.
Well, if you've noticed in the paper, why the school is what, 7. something? If we add four or more to it, that's over 10% increase in real estate taxes, and, uh, that's a pretty good vote on the lot.
But it's not per person, you're not gonna pay that, your taxes is not gonna go up that much. You gotta look at it as the whole spectrum of everything. So, you know, we've done this before, and like, for instance, like last year my taxes went down, but even though we did this exact same thing at 4.9%. So this is not based on each individual parcel, no, this is as the broad spectrum of everything across the city.
But it still reflects back on our tax bill, right? When you're getting, that's with Christian County?
Yeah, we will file this with the county, yes. So is the school set up different than municipalities, I'm assuming?
The school goes through the county as well, I mean.
But no, no, I mean, I'm setting on the amount, he says like 11, see, we're, we're limited to four.
Well, if they had referendum, if they've had a special task that they passed, so they may have done, they may have done the public hearings and uh, the referendums or the ordinances or whatever they needed to do to go above the truth in taxation limit.
Truth in taxation.
So you can go above that, there are just a bunch of steps that you have to take, they include public hearing and that, so. Most municipalities, villages, cities don't.
Don't do that.
Don't, no, and they don't want to increase the taxes that much, and the reason for that increase that it is, especially now, is that the cost of everything is going up, and it will be likely higher than, the cost of things will likely go up more than 4.9%, so, um.
You know, that's more sewer project. Do you have a, any discussion? Can we have a roll call to approve the tax levy ordinance, please? Uh, this is ordinance number 791. No, we haven't done it, I just.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought.
Yeah. Have a motion to approve the.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, all right, roll call please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
All right, this is the resol- up next is a motion to approve the TIP resolution for Cal Brothers. Uh, this is a resolution that we had, uh, came upon, uh, the agreement for them, uh, at the last council meeting, so just need a motion to approve that, and that would be Resolution 2022-7.
I'll make the motion.
You have a second? One second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All right, up next then is the motion to approve the TIP agreement for Cal Brothers. We had to do the resolution first, and then we're doing, basically doing the agreement to, that we'll abide by the resolution.
I'll make the motion.
All right, second, you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Sina, roll call please.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
All right, up next, we have a motion to approve the repair bill for $3,009.40 for the dump truck, that was done out at Burton's.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
All right, up next, we have the, uh, motion to approve the TIP eligibility study for grow assumption, and it's not to exceed $5,250. This is to, uh, do the data collection and analysis to see that the farmland, uh, is eligible to be in the TIP.
I make that motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
All right, up next, this came out of, uh, finance, uh, from NAP came, and, uh, to approve, uh, to ask for a liquor license for breakfast, visit, eats, this will be done more so like, uh, for catering purposes, they do not plan on selling any liquor out of their establishment, but they are needing it. The states require them to get one in order for them to do it for catering, so.
I'll make the motion.
And, uh, before I go, they will get one for this month, they have asked that, so.
Okay.
They'll get, they'll pay for one for December, and then they'll also have to pay to get it for next quarter, and she's aware of that, so she asked for that. Yeah, so she asked, yeah.
From finance?
It is different from finance, that's why I wanted to say that, because originally she stated they were gonna start January 1st, but then she came and asked, uh, asked me if they could start in December, so essentially, her start date will be tomorrow.
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? Sina, roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yep.
Reed.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
All right, up next, we have the motion to approve the fireworks contract for $9,000, I do actually have a little bit of good news. I talked to Abby, because I'm with ACPA, and they are going to donate a thousand dollars towards the fireworks. Um, so essentially it will be at what we are at, 8,000. She said it does have to get approved by their board, but she stated even if it, you know, she didn't think that there would be a problem with their board approving it. But anyway, she did commit, and she goes, if there's any hiccups, they'll, so, but what they'll do is that, she's just gonna send us a check for it. So need a motion to approve the contract for 2023 fireworks for $9,000?
Derek, I was.
Go ahead.
Is there a reason why the alternative rain date's the 8th instead of like the 5th or something? Did they pick that date, or is that?
No, it's, it was from, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Brian picked that date for fireworks.
Okay, I just wondered where the date came from, did they, they never did have a date on it when we.
No, they didn't.
Okay.
And I tried to get it even ahead, and they're, they're like, it's gonna end up probably costing more because they do it more weekly at the same time, so we just kept it on the, on the 4th. We have a motion to approve the fireworks contract?
I'll make the motion.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
All right, this came out of the zoning committee, uh, they met, uh, a couple weeks ago, uh, to approve, to amend the zoning map. So we, the city's zoning map will now match what the county has, we were off by a couple of places, there was about, uh, 10, maybe 10, 15 parcels, I know Donnie was one of them, and, uh, we now match the county for what they have, so we see the motion to approve the, the amended zoning map.
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you. You have a second?
A second.
Right. Any discussion, Sina, roll call please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All right, up next, I'm gonna just kind of turn it over a little bit to CTI, CTI has reached out to me, uh, they are interested in doing business here. As you well know, a couple years ago, we had the opportunity to have them come, however, not enough people had signed up, so I was happy to hear that they're interested in coming to assumption, so I'm gonna turn it over to them and kind of see what they've got to say. We've got the board.
Yeah, so, we approached you previously about it, and talked about pre-signup process, um, we haven't really even pushed it here since then, and in the last two years, we've had 386 residents that have interacted with our website in some way. Either they pre-signed up, they tried to sign up, discovered service wasn't available, just interacted with our site in some way and showed interest. That's why we're here, we have 22 communities on our list right now that are interested, we are narrowing it down to 12 that we're gonna build in the next couple of months. Um, assumption is one of our key ones that we're looking at, we just wrapped up Pana, we sent a crew to Blue Mountain two weeks ago, so we're starting to spread, and we're looking for the next 30 days to come here. Internet, TV, phone, that's what we do, if anybody has any questions about that stuff, feel free. Um, I know there are questions about franchise agreements, we have a statewide, we're a CLAC, technically, we can build anywhere in the right way in any community, we have that ability via licensing, um, we do state franchise.
And you can't, I don't need to.
No, I mean, he's, he's right, we, we do not, yeah.
Because that, that came from our departments. Yeah, our department heads told me, you, you have to have this franchise agreement with you guys, because they were worried about, you know, we want to make sure that you guys also clean up your mess.
Oh, absolutely, and that's one of the biggest things that we do also, sorry not to interrupt you, um, our crew, we have a landscaper that follows our crew and cleans up everything, reseeds everything, most of the work we do is directional work, we do have some digging, we have to do the structures in the ground, et cetera, but we do have a landscaping crew that follows our crews around and fixes everything that we, we tear up, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, he's corrected it, there is, right, you cannot require them to have a franchise agreement, but we, you guys do need to follow our permitting process.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and so that's, we'll have to look into that.
And obviously, I mean, the easier it is for us to build, the quicker we can get started, you know, et cetera.
Yeah.
But as far as the state franchise agreement as well, we will pay the 5% TV tax to you guys directly. It's not a thing that comes from the state, it's something that we cut whenever that gets built out each year. So you still get that 5% off the TV tax, it just comes from us instead of from the state.
Um, another thing is, it's really basically everything on this side of town, to the, uh, the, the west side, um, you know, we have a, a second phase of our sewer project coming through, so that is something to be very vigilant.
Our, our construction manager actually talked to your superintendent, and the discussion they had is, we navigate based on you.
Okay.
He's marking utilities, he's handling that stuff, if he has a stretch that they need to avoid, we jump on our map to a different section of town, and we do our work that week, you know, in a different area, we're willing to work around you when it comes to that stuff. The crew that's coming in here are all individuals that are employed by us, it's not a subcontracting crew, they're guys that are from Taylorville, they're from Pana, No Comas, there are people that we can pull their chain if something doesn't right. So it's not a situation where just anybody's coming in here and doing it, and at the same time, our construction manager goes crew to crew each day and makes sure that everything's okay, and has an open line of communication with, have a work superintendent's always. And it is one of those things, we, we try and only send one crew to each town because we don't overwhelm them having a marked water lines. There's other stuff he needs to be doing as opposed to sending all-day market water lines for us to avoid. So we try and just go with one crew, but we can move pretty quick with one crew as well.
I know, it's, it's, I think it's well-needed.
Yeah.
I, I'm not having my internet service that I have, I have, I have a satellite, and, uh, because I was one of those, I really wanted you guys here a long time ago, super happy. Now, what about, just like, here's like on, on your rates, because that, that, we actually had a, a former alderman had asked me about it, so like, you're, you know, like what your rates are going to be, or anything like that?
As far as internet rates, the internet is the thing we control the easiest, because that's, we provide the bandwidth, all that. TV rates are one of those things that can fluctuate, and it's based on what we have to pay the networks, we just went through an increase with TV rates recently, um, and it was based on the fact that the networks want ungodly rates. Now, as far as our internet goes, we offer our best package, the best value is gig by gig, that's a thousand meg by a thousand meg. Probably nobody else here is offering that right now, and it's 69.95 a month, and we offer a price lock for life.
Oh, really?
So, there is no increase on that, as long as that package exists, that price is locked.
Wow, okay.
And just to give you an idea, if you're not familiar with that stuff, most providers in town, such as assumption, the max that they will go to is 100 by 100 as far as the speeds go, and we're talking a thousand by a thousand.
Yeah, I pay 130 for Sparklight for unlimited unless like.
Yeah, and we have no data caps either, we've never had data caps, and that's something we'll never go to because it's ridiculous in the first place.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
They can go in at 300, I think 300's the max, because that's what I, I mean.
If, if you're close to one of the pedestals, you can give that 300 too, because that's a different close fiber. Everybody we deliver to, we can get, get gig by gig, it doesn't matter, the lodge can have it, the city hall can have it, there's no loss in signal because we don't have to put an amp in to do that. Um, a couple things with the communities that we look at that we need, uh, we need a storage lot to put materials on, and then we seek a dumping site, we use a back to daylight all utilities.
Are you talking about for soil, just for dirt, I guess?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, yeah, if you're talking about, you say the, the slag pile.
Yeah, and we don't, there's no chemicals in it, it's just water, that's all it is, muddy water, but every utility that we go across, we daylight it to make sure that it's an extra insurance policy not to hit it, so if there's a water landmark here, we daylight it and expose it, and we watch the drill go right under it as opposed to just plowing through it hoping for the bad issue now. Um, and again, that stuff, we fill it all back in, our landscaping crew comes behind us, they seed, lay down straw, repair everything as it was.
Well, like I said, this is something that I'm really interested in, and as I know, I'm sure you guys are too, so I, yeah, I'm, I'm very interested in starting the process on getting you guys in. You know, I mean, what are some of the first steps you have, or what, what, what's your next steps, I guess?
Our next step will be confirmation of lots that we can utilize, uh, we'll need water as well, we pay for the water, that's not something we expect you to give to us, either a meter for a hydrant, or if you have a bulk supply here that we can.
We do have a bulk supply.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, either one works for us, I mean, and no matter what, we'll pay for, we're not looking for that for free by any stretch.
Um, one other thing that we might need, and you guys might, if you could help us with it, it doesn't have to be city property, we probably need an active site which will house a 12 by 12 foot building, and we will purchase that lot. So if you have a piece of city property we can carve out, or if you know of someone that has a lot on 51, or a farmer that has just a little section that we can buy.
You mean about Roamer?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we just sold that.
Oh, I didn't know it.
We just sold that, yeah. Yeah.
So yeah, ultimately, once we lock those things, then we're good, then we schedule a crew to, to come here, we've got a crew that's about to finish up in Rochester right now. I wanna say that they're probably looking at mid-January to be finished up there, and then they would be the next crew that we dispatch this way. So that's why we're putting a 30-day window on that, because depending on weather, if we get a hard freeze or something and they run into some trouble, takes a little longer, then it'll be a little bit later to get them here, but as long as we have those requirements laid out.
Water, land for 12 by 12 building.
And again, we will.
Burgess, a 5051?
Most likely yes, we'll probably come from Pana and come right down 51 in Italians.
Oh, okay.
That would be our plan right now.
Uh, hang on, I'll ask that, do you have a projected date, like once you get started, when you could possibly be done?
I'm trying to think what the projection was on this, I can confirm that, probably early next week with our mapping company that does the engineering. I wanna say that they were estimating assumption to take around four months tops, and that is with extra time put in.
Yeah.
Weather, et cetera, if there is something, odds are good they could finish it up sooner than that, but I wanna say that's the window they've put out for the size of town that we're looking at is four months to finish this up.
So will you have to rewire every house basically in town?
Yeah, we'll have to run fiber up and down every street, it is actual fiber optic to your house, it's not, you know, just fiber fed or anything else, it's actual fiber all the way into your house is what we do.
Because I didn't know if they can, if they use the existing, because you know how, like, if you have DirecTV and you have.
Yeah.
Your cable.
Yeah, no.
Run off the same box.
No, with the fact that, I mean, there's fiber lines that run down 51 that are feeder fibers, we might end up hooking onto that to feed it, or we might run our own back hall, we haven't determined that yet, depends on what engineering tells us as far as, far as cost goes. Um, but we will have to do fiber on every street to make sure and get the, uh, the network that we build, basically.
So would there be a, people who don't sign up for it initially, would they get a separate charge if they decide to get hooked up later, or?
No, not all, not all, if you call in, say you decide you want it, you call in, we come out, we send a drop crew out, they were in line to your house when you sign up, hook you up, everything's set up, if you decide six months later you want it, same thing, I'm scheduled, and they come out, and you drop to your house, there's no added charge, our drop guys and installers, they run on the same thing where whoever signs up is where they're going. And currently, they're all over, all over the place, because we have service in Hillsborough, Litchfield, No Comas, Taylorville, you know, so they're running all over the place to do it, and there's no charge to that, and as far as the length of the drop goes, 200 is what we limit it at, I think it's 200 feet of the run to the house, so up to 200 feet is free, and a lot of times we'll overlook it if it's a little bit more than anyway.
Okay, Derek?
Yeah?
Is, are we able to sign up in advance before the project starts?
You can, yes, um, it is one of those things where you, we require a payment ahead of time for the first month, that's how the whole thing works in the contract. You can if you would like to, for me, I say don't bother until we're here.
Yeah.
Honestly, I mean, my boss may not like me saying that, but, uh, it just makes more sense for it to just already be here and be done.
Well, they can't make the first month payment.
Well, yeah, that's true, that does delay that, but you can do that, and it'll notify you to make the first month payment, it's just up to you if you want to go that route or not.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll talk this, you know, try to get you some answers as to what on the, on the requirements, and, um, we'll go from there, but what can you get informed?
we'll go from there. We'll, we'll get informed.
And yeah, if there's any questions you guys have, don't hesitate. I try and cover everything, but I blow through stuff pretty quick, so.
And so, man, I can't even get Disney Plus in my hair.
I can't either.
I have to go to my mom's.
Now, I live in the same neighborhood as you. I live out in the country between Stonington and Mount Auburn, so I can't get it either. My only hope is that Mount Auburn gets on board, and they go from Stonington, or from Blue Mountain past my house, and then I might get lucky, but otherwise, I have the same issue that you did.
Yes, I can't get Disney Plus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, you guys have any questions on this?
I'll do some brochure and stuff here, too.
Uh, you got, okay. Uh, given that Mark and Jack, they did not have anything really to add for the upcoming, on the projects. So, but they said if anything comes up, we'll talk about it in finance for the next council meeting. So that does it for public comments on non-agenda items. You guys have anything?
Do we have anything about the Waste Management Contract? Isn't that up at the end of the month?
No, it's up at the end of twenty-three.
Oh, it's the end of twenty-three.
Twenty-three, yeah. So this will give us time to see how the Molequa does, because.
Yeah, because.
We're not, good things about Molequa's contract.
Who are they going with now?
Uh, it's a company out of Clinton.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, something like that, so we'll see. I, I do know from talking to Sean, they signed up very, very early. I mean, it was like spring they signed, and so. So we'll, we'll have some time to go and take a look at it. There was just, Gary and I was just talking about an independent garbage hauler out of Mattune. They just got bought out by Waste Management.
Yeah, because Waste, do you, do we know what Waste Management's rates are?
For, for what?
Like their actual rates, like, not like we're on a contract, but what their normal rates are, like, when the contract ends, because I'm.
Well, I don't know, I think that kind of varies. I mean, I don't think they, you know, see if there's anything broad. I don't, I really.
I think you, they usually start top, like, six months in advance.
Yeah, I mean, we'll start, I mean, I kind of mentioned to Gary, maybe start kind of looking maybe in February, but it's usually in June. We'll start trying to check that out, see.
Guys, are you fans? Need a motion to adjourn?
Okay, make a motion.
Perfect, Suzie, you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, adjourn.